Good morning, good afternoon, good evening or good night, wherever you are, welcome to the stream. So today, if you don't know about it, we have Blender is giving out a free asset every day, a free add-on. So get yours, here's your link, you can go and check it out. Today's asset is better lighting. So go and check that out. Easier easier to add lights to your scene, oh look at that, that's cool. That is really cool. So I already downloaded my... Go and get yours guys. Okay, so today... Today, 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 the goal... Carrying on here with our add-on. The goal is to capture some edges after a solidify operation or an extrude face region operation. Now both of these guys just give me geometry with faces, edges or verts and verts that were extruded or solidified. And I gotta figure out a way to get the separate edges, like this is gonna be a surface, so it's like a square or rectangular surface. I gotta figure out a way of getting the extruded top edges, bottom edges, left edges and right edges. Now, I already have those for the original geometry. But when the extrusion happens or the solidify happens, it's not as easy because if I try to just get the boundary, there is no boundary because they're connected to the previous geometry. The faces, if I get the faces, I don't just get the faces of what was extruded, but also what is connecting to the original geometry. So it seems a little bit... It's harder than it sounds. But we will find a way. Okay, let me get my bearings. Here is the function that, let's use solidify or extrude, which is this function. And then we get geo from that, as you can see from... Any one of them gives me geo. Here in the extrude, I'm just grabbing the verts and moving the extruded verts. Right, and I'm recalculating face normals to make sure everything looks good after it, there's no flipped normals. Right, so... With that, right here I'm getting all the solidify operation edges. And I get the outer edges by doing an edge loop on the last edge, right, okay. Okay, so if I already have the out edges... New vertices created by the solidify operation. Extruded edge works. One second. Or E in out edges, oh, okay, so I'm grabbing the verts that... Or V in E verts, I think I'm doing a big mess here. This is completely unnecessary. Or not, ah no, I'm getting all the verts on the boundary edge. That's, that's alright. Outer edges of the solidify boundary, this should actually be... It's not really boundary, is it? I'll leave it like that, I understood, I'm gonna understand again when I come back, I guess. Right. This is fine, I'm grabbing those verts. What for, by the way? What do I need that for? Ah, to return there. I think I won't need to do this. Let me do a little to-do here. Might not be needed. Woke up with a little bit of cough today, I think picked up a little bit of cold here in my room as I was sleeping. I see if I don't get a cold. So I already have the original geometry edges, what I'm thinking, my approach to thinking is... And down here is where we gotta do this. Here I came up with this idea to get the corners and this works really well. I should open up Blender so you have an idea of what I'm talking about. Okay, so if I create a surface here and then I extrude it. What I'm talking about. I already have these, these edges. So I got everything separated here, I got this top one, this bottom one, the left and the side B, I'm calling this side A and that side B. So... I got these corners here from this extrude geometry, this one, this one, that one and that one. And that's how I am getting them like this. So I'm going through the out edges that I grabbed up here using my edge loop function by selecting one edge and getting those edges. Out edges. So basically I selected this edge and I have a function that will look for... That will create a loop like this and grab those edges. That's the edge loop function. So it returns all edges connected to edge in an open or closed boundary loop, okay. Okay. Well, if I have that... I'm wondering if I grab this corner, if it's gonna give me this, because this is... This would be off, off way done if, if it does that. That function, if you wanna see it. It's this one over here. Oh, it's a big one, yeah. This was quite a bit of work to get, to get done, to be honest. And we're using the link loop next and link radial next and from faces and all that. Never mind that, for now. But if I can do that, I can grab one of these corners. Because if I have these, these going, all I have to do is remove the original geometry and because I already have the corners, remove the corners and I get that one. The thing is, where is this corner gonna, what is this corner gonna give me? If I place it in that function, well, we gotta find out, let's do that. Alright. So we have our corners up there. And I know they're the right corners because I've tested it. Let's, um... Let's just call this new loop for lack of... And... Let's just grab the first. I'm gonna ensure a lookup table so that I can just grab the, the edges from bmesh and do this. Just for the time being. Beimedges and the index that I want can be the last index on this set. Corners, no, I don't, I don't want that. Can I grab a... I think I can't grab stuff. Method not defined on type set, okay, that's fine. Not worry about optimization for now, I know I'm doing... This is not the right way to do it, but I just wanna know... What do I get from that new loop? And I'm gonna look at the index, let's, let's check that out. Probably a good idea to print these out, right? Look at the print at least. Alright, so I, I got a few edges here printed, as you can see. Let's see what edges are those. For that we gotta turn on indices. So what I got there is 86, 12, 26, 21... 86, 12, 26, 21, can I find any of that? 21 is right there. 21, 26, right there. There's the 12 there. I think it's just this outer loop again, isn't it? No, 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 it's not. It's not. So I got 31 in there, 21, 26, 12, do I have 86? I have 86, 51, yes, I have 51, 76, I have 76, I have 64, I have 67 and I got 89. So what I have is this one. Let's see if that's consistent and if, um... And what is this index, by the way? What is this edge? And that's another thing, how am I going to... Okay, so this, this would be the left loop. Let me print. Yeah, that would actually be... I just wanna maybe turn this into a list before I convert that set into a list. You're asking, why do I have a set? Is it because I'm avoiding repeats? There's repeats in this functionality. In this loop, I'm gonna get repeats and a set doesn't allow for repeats, so no duplicate values. That's why I'm getting the index and, uh, and using a set. I'll just convert this to a list so that I don't have to do it here. And I'll print the, the index, uh, it's, yeah, this is already an index. This is wrong. Because corners is now a list of indexes. And here, okay, alright, so let's do that again and see what we got. Make sure this is consistent, otherwise it's, it's a mess. Alright, so we got the same edges, I believe, yeah, the other ones up here. They're not ordered, but they are the same. In terms of order, okay, and this is referring to these 86, this corner 86, okay. Gives me that. Let's investigate. Looking at that, they both start with 86. And one of them goes... Yeah, he goes down to 67 and then 64, 76. So one, one of them is actually in order. 12, 26, 21 and 31. The first time I printed it, it wasn't in order, it started on 86 and went down to 12, I wonder why is that? The only thing I did was I converted the things, no, that's not it. I can't, I can't think of order anyway, but I don't need it. Alright. Now I gotta make sure that this coordinate is always gonna give me the left. Let's add some more geometry and see what happens. I forgot to turn auto on. We have an issue, yeah, I didn't update all the functions, I know I had the crash. I shouldn't have turned auto mode on because I haven't updated this yet. Let's work with last geometry, it's easier for us. Less edges to count, yeah. Okay, so this was my... I think this is all messed up now. But 55, 31, 28, 25, I got 2, 1 and 0 there, that's completely wrong, I need to restart Blender. In fact, I'm also gonna restart VS Code because I just updated co-pilot. It's always good to restart VS Code when you update something. Alright. I gotta make sure we have consistent values. This is important. It's too much geometry, right? Let's just make our lives a little bit easier here. Oh, I can see that because, no, I changed geometry, I have to ignore this at the moment, thank God. Let's clean slate. But I got this geometry here. I think it's not enough, so I'm just gonna add another one here. Create surface, alright. Okay, so I already have a result there, let's get in here. And this is what we got, let me just refill my vape before I burn my mouth. Alright, let's see if this is indeed the loop that we have here. So 55, I got 55, I got 9, I got 16, I got 23, I got 57, 46, 39 and 32, okay, that is the loop that I grabbed. Now keep getting consistent results, right? Yeah. Let's change the geometry and see if we still have consistent results. Now it's gonna be a little bit harder, but I have to do it. So I find, um... 92, where is 92? Okay, from the get-go, 92 doesn't even exist and I have 92 in there, I got 45 in there, it's not here. Can I find 92 in there? 92 is on this side. Yeah, because this is the... This is the edge that I grabbed to do the operation, I used 92 there. Now this is a problem, I'm getting them not in a specific order, so it's gonna be hard to determine which corner. to determine which corner I'm at at the moment. But not really, I guess. Because I have access to these verts in the front. I can do it by that. Let me just check if this is the correct edge right now. So we got 45, we got 85 in there. We got 100, we got 20. Yeah, this is the right edge. So if I grab this corner, it gives me that edge. If I grab that top corner, it gives me that edge loop. All I have to do is look at this edge and ask if this edge shares verts. If one of the verts in this edge is one of these start or end verts and then I know where I am. I guess. Yeah, pretty much. Thinking if that's actually the what I want to do here. Anyway, this is giving me that. Let me try minus 2. Or even the very first one in there. See what that gives me and maybe reduce the geometry a little bit. Okay, so the one I picked was 56. And that's this guy down here. Right, and he's giving me, I can right away tell, he's giving me this, this one here. Alright. So if I grab that one, I get this one. If I grab that one, I get this one. I believe if I grab 51, I would get this one. And if I grab this corner, I'll get this edge. Think I can work with that. Let's improve this. Because this could be much better, I think. Instead of a set... Well, a set is always faster, I think, than using an if statement, checking if something is inside another list. So yeah, I'll leave a set in there. And I'm gonna grab... But the problem is... Now I'll do this in a set. As soon as I got the set, I turned the set into a list, as I'm doing here. This is probably gonna be deleted. Yeah, this is gonna be deleted. I just can't do it now because it will break everything. Okay, so now what I'll do is I'll loop through those corners. And grab each edge loop. So... I'm wondering if I can place the edges in there. That way I don't have to access them again. Only grabbing the edges for this function here, really. I think BMEdge as an equals operator. I also have the other one that takes in the edges. I have this function. This one takes in BMedges. Let's try that. Instead of the index... Now this is a different thing. Let's leave that alone. Instead of the index, we're gonna try and put an object in that set. And the object needs the equals operator, otherwise these won't work. But I think BMEdge has it. Alright, that means... Get this... Have to be that. I wouldn't have to access BMedges no more. I wouldn't have to ensure lookup table. And if it does have an equal operator, this should work. Let's figure it out. I need my console. It did work. Otherwise we'd get an error. Okay, so if that works... If that works... I'll just loop these new corner edges. For edge in corners, right? Yeah, I might wanna print something. And the edge index in front of it, alright. So this gives me the edge index. I could do this just to confirm my theory that it's doing that. Why was I doing this? Right, to save the loops, alright. Let's just see what loops we get here. With my console... Figure that. And this is wrong. I can see right away that this is wrong. Oh, I am an idiot. Because I'm always getting the same one, so this should be edge. Okay, so at 55, we got those. 49, we got those. 53, we got those. 50, we got those, alright. Just to confirm my theory. So 55, we got 46, 39, 32. Yeah, that's right. 55, we got this one on this side. Missed the 49 down here. Is actually giving me this bottom one. 53 is giving me this one. What is 55 doing? Alright, so both 55 and 53, I think they're giving me the same thing. 55 is giving me 23, 16, blah 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 blah. Right? Hang on. Easier if I select them, right? 55 has 53 in there. It has 32. It has 9, it has 16, it has 39, 23, 46 and 55. Now 53, what does 53 has? It has 53. It has 9, it has 16. So both these corners are giving me this edge. That's not good. That means I can't do what I was planning on doing. 55, 53, these two corners are giving me the same edge here. So how about 49? 49 is giving me 49, 2, 1, blah blah blah. How about 50? Which is this top one. 50 is giving me 50, 43 is giving me this top one. So I can't really work with this function. It's if two corners are giving me the same loop. I have to rethink this. Find a different way, I suppose. So I got these guys, right? And I got the corners. And I also have the out edges. Which is these guys. And by the way, what I want is to clearly identify this top one. Do I have something that can find like parallel parallel edges or something? Let me check. I've wrote a lot of functions for bMesh. I have other ones that select loops. For example, this edge loop close. I haven't tried that one. But I'm thinking, is this the right way to go or we should try something else? Because if I have something that can select parallel edges or something like that, I might be able to... Might be a better option. Adjacent edges. Let me just do that here and see what is this. Adjacent edges. Returns the two edges connected to the two edges at the end of an open loop. Useful to bridge them and close the loop. Seriously, I did that. These two edges. You have edge net prepare that does that for you. I don't know why I did that. I probably didn't knew about edge net prepare. No, I don't have anything that selects parallel edges. But I have this one. Let's see what this one does. What this one gives me. Boundary equals true. Right, I'll try turning that off. Alright, let's see what we get here. Right, that's not many edges what I'm working at here. Okay, so 50 gave me... Okay, this is a single edge, I believe. So let me see where is 50? 50 is down here. No, it gave me four edges, so it must be one of these. 31, 50 and 9. And 31 is over there. 50, it sells. Where is 9? It's right there. 31, 50 and 9. Where is 50? I can't see 50. It's probably right. 50, it's itself. Alright, so 9, 50, 31. 9, 50, 31. And that's it. And that's it. Because fifty comes twice. What the heck is this? Let me turn off the boundary. If I get something more useful out of this. Ah, that's very useful, yeah, very useful. And what happens if I turn boundary off here? Oh, I don't have boundary on this one, okay. Alright, let's forget about that. I gotta find another way. Okay, so I gotta think about this for a sec. I got this edge. If I have a function that selects edges like this, like I just did. It would be handy. Because then I can look at these words. And see if they're connected and figure out which edge they're connected to that is not part of the original geometry. And get to that point there. Actually, it might be easier to see what faces are connected to them. I don't know, I kind of like this approach, I'm, I'm just, if I can figure out a way of making this work. I don't understand why it's not, it's giving me repeat, um well, repeats. It shouldn't. I don't want to go into that function, it's too scary. This kind of sounds interesting, let me check these one. Boundary is false, let me see what that gives me. Only gives me four edges every time. Right there. I don't see repeats though, but four edges? Actually, it's three edges. No, it's not three edges. It doesn't include itself. So four edges? That sounds weird because we have three edges here. Three, four maybe? Let's see what it gives us. I could just select these guys, right? I could just select this and make my life easier. Um, the thing is, this then goes to another function that does selections and stuff. That's why I'm not doing that. Yeah, let's forget about that, I'll keep looking at the indexes for now. Okay, so fifty gave me thirty-two. Uh, zero, nine, thirty-two and, and thirty-one, I think I don't know what, what that is. I think it's I don't know why it gave me nine. It must be this one here, it is this one. They give me zero, nine, thirty-one. And thirty-two, yeah, so all connected edges, that's, that's alright. And this is boundary false. If boundary is true, only returns boundary edges. Right? That doesn't really help me. But it gave me an idea. Because at this point, I can get these two. Alright, that's, that's the result from fifty. Results from fifty-five, which is this one here, gave me, probably the same thing, yeah, twenty-four, six, twenty-five and two. So from this, I can grab either this one or this one. Because I can ask from those four edges you got, which ones are not part of the original geometry, and he's going to give me these two. Right? And from these two, I can actually select a loop. A loop. So I might be able to, just from two corners, get everything I need. So that question that I was just asking. From the edges that you got, give me the edges that are not part of the original geometry, let's perhaps do that. And another thing is that, uh no, forget it. Alright. We already have the out edges, which is the outside, all these ones that were extruded, the outside ones, so all I have to ask is, out of those ones, which ones are in here, in the out edges? Inside of out edges, yeah. Alright, so the extruded is going to be our palette knows it, E for in-loop, F E in-out-edges. Now if I just get extruded I should get what I'm looking at, uh, for. So fifty-three has thirty-one and thirty-two. Yeah, fifty-three has thirty-one and thirty-two, that's right, then fifty has forty-one and forty-three. Fifty, forty-one and forty-three. Fifty, uh fifty-two should have forty-seven and forty-six, let me check, yeah, that's right, fifty-seven has twenty-four and twenty-five. Great, great. Okay. Now I can create I should be able to select this. And that's, I think it's a function that I don't have and I should have. But maybe I don't have it because already exists in bMesh. I doubt it would be in bMesh shops, it's just, um no, it's not going to be in bMesh shops. We gotta figure out a way to select these ones. I need a break, I'll be right back. Okay, let's have a look see in the documentation. At our bMesh types. Okay, so in terms of edges. BM vert, I love this little browser that they put here in this new version of the documentation, this is very good. Very helpful. So the vert itself has link edges, which is edges connected to this vert. Faces connected to this vert, blah, 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 link loops. Loops that use this vertex, and this is a BM loop from a face. Right, what I'm more interested in is edge. What is calculate face angle? The angle between two connected faces in radians. That sounds I don't know what that means. Calculate face angle signed, and that's the sign. Need to brush up on my trigonometry, I guess. Okay, um other vert. I could use this other vert to get there, but then what? Interesting. It kind of makes me, kind of feels like it's what I'm looking for. Vert has edges, right, um this continues and we got link loops as well. Loops connected to this edge. When they talk about loops, they talk about the loops in a face, a face has four, uh, well, a quad face would have four edges, that's what they call a BM loop. Those four edges. Which gets really confusing. But it is what it is. I might be better off looking at the functions that I have. What if I do an edge loop on one of those edges? Or edge loop closed? Let's try that. Alright, so these are the extruded. Я оставлю эту печать здесь. Для E extrude. Я думаю, эта печать будет немного confusing, но позвольте мне попробовать. Позвольте, просто... О, выделите это. Хорошо. Так что здесь мы. Это может быть то, что я ищу. Так что каждый угол выходит. Так что первая печать просто два edges, которые она берет. Вторая - это уголь, который она черезходит. И что лупа, loop закрытая, которая получает. Так что посмотрим сначала. Так что угол 52. Это этот здесь. Он берет 46 и 47, очевидно. И... Идентекс 46 дает мне только 46 и 47. Но тогда идентекс 47... Дает мне 47... 52 и 17. Что? 52 и 17. Он дал мне эти три. Хорошо, это loop закрытая. Это не работает. Позвольте, я просто попробую с boundary. Угол 55. Угол 55 дает мне 46, 39 и 32. 46, 39 и 32. И он дал мне 47, 45 и 43. 47, 45 и 43. Хорошо, это то, что я ищет. Это то, что я ищет. Позвольте, позвольте проверить остальные. Так что угол 49... Дает мне 24, 34 и 41. 24, 34, 41. И они выходят в порядок и все красиво. 25, 28 и 31. Отлично. Так что только из этих двух я был, я бы... Это было сделано. Это было сделано. И затем эти парни, очевидно, будут давать мне эту лупу, эту... Этот будет давать мне этот и этот. Хорошо. Правильно, так что... Как мы будем делать это? Потому что это будет давать нам edges, которые мы хотим. Но мы все еще должны найти, какой является, правильно? Что на вершину, начало, конец, уголь, который я называю внутрь A, внутрь B. Мы все еще должны найти это. Но прежде чем мы это сделаем... Я тяжело время нахожу, как я буду называть это. Разделяет extrude loops. О мой Бог! Может быть, separated... Separated loops, я думаю, я буду там с этим. Я собираюсь использовать список, потому что я хочу спросить, есть ли они там. Если они существуют и выходят из лупы, когда необходимо. Так что мне нужно четыре уникальных, четыре уникальных... лупы. Здесь. Так что эти лупы 2. Да. Если, если приходит перед этим. Давайте посмотрим, может ли мой помощник помочь мне. Нет, потому что это лупа. От output этого просто список. Я не думаю, что это будет работать. Так что каждая отдельная лупа. Да, я не... Я знал, что это не будет работать. Не знаю, почему я... Я перешел с этим. Хорошо, так что вопрос, который мне надо сделать, не действительно это. О, и... О, этот помог мне. Господи, Мария и Джозеф, что ты делаешь? Это то, что я хотел. Лупа в отдельных лупах. Да. Да, так что я получаю множество разных луп. Эта пауза действительно происходит только для этого. Этого. Да. Так что... Длина отдельных луп - 4 паузы, но здесь не 4. В 4 лупах у нас есть пауза, продолжение. У нас есть еще одна? В любом случае, как это произошло? Это вопрос. О мой Бог, я все еще спущен. Я должен исправить свое сну. Я просто, я lately так сильно силен. И я не могу спать более 4 часов. Это делает меня сумасшедшим. Хорошо. Это всегда будет проходить, я думаю. Так что, что я должен спросить, это... Если что-то из этого в этой лупе... Есть в любой из списков в отдельных лупах, фактически. Давайте посмотрим, поможет ли он мне. E in loop for loop in separate loops. Он даже ничего не делает сейчас. Это всегда фальшиво сейчас. Хорошо, так что я просто избавляюсь от мышления, не? Так что for loop in separate loops. Если что-то из edges в лупе 2... ...останется... ...внутри этой лупы. Так что это должно быть... Лупа 2, правильно? For loop in separate loops. Для E in loop. Да. Я думаю, это правильный вопрос, который мне надо спросить. Конечно, нет. Это нет. Хорошо, теперь мы где-то набираемся. Так что у нас есть один, который 31, 28. Никаких из них не должны быть повторными, хорошо? Мы видим здесь повторные цифры? Мы не видим. Так что мы готовы идти. У нас теперь четыре внешние edges, внутри этих... отдельных луп. Это заняло мне время. Я стараюсь. Серьезно, когда я был моложе, я бы кодировал гораздо быстрее. Это все было так, как... Так легко. То же самое с играми. Моя реакция в играх так плохая, что я просто перестал играть в игры. Хорошо. Так что отдельные лупы имеют лупы, которые мы хотим. Теперь нам нужно найти, какая лупа является что. Которая на вершине лупы, которая на нижней, etc. И для этого... Я собираюсь найти, что этот парень, в действительности, это начало лупы. Мне нужно каким-то образом найти, есть ли корреляция с этим парнем. Я знаю, что этот - это начало лупы, оригинальная геометрия. Так что мне просто нужно найти корреляцию с этим. И мне нужно помнить... что геометрия может выглядеть так. Так что я не могу действительно вернуться к... средним вертаментам здесь. Кто-то придумал идею? Well... I know this edge is always gonna be connected... To a face. And I can, even if we have more geometry... Um... Well, it's gonna be connected to these faces as well, but I can figure out which one of the faces it's connected to. And grab just the one here, I guess. Link faces, I actually not sure if it's gonna give me this face here and this face here as well. And that face there. Because it just might. Hmm... Only one way to find out, I guess. And does this give me an error or actually anything with this kind of geometry? Because I'm seeing empty loops here. These two should be just one edge in this case scenario, and they're not. Hmm. I could ask here if the loop 2 is empty by saying if not... If not loop 2, it's empty and place... He's only gonna have one edge in this case, I think. So I can say... I can append that one edge. Which... Hmm... Is it E in this case? I'm a bit lost right now. Is it E? Now I get this silliness. Ah, yes, and he would continue, of course. Why do I get this twice? Is this, um, hang on. Anyway, uh, let me first check what the heck am I looking at? So 10, 14, 17. 10, 14, 17, and the other one is 18, 15, 12. 18, 15, 12, that's right. And then I got 11. And I got 19. But in the end, I got 11 again. I can't append if it's already in there, right? That's why I was placing it in there, but it still didn't work. Oh... The continue makes it so that this never happens. Hang on. Okay, now we got what we need. Hmm. Gotta think breakfast soon. Okay, so we got these outside edges. Let me see if the same thing happens... Uh, with less geometry. What happens if I only have... A plane? Yeah. That's why I have to check every single scenario... That I can think of. Look at this error here, right? Okay, in edge loop, we could not find a valid path. That's not even an error from here. Hmm. Edge loop. I'm looking at the wrong function, actually. I created this error. I'm like, I've literally created this error. Um, okay, to force myself to check if there's a valid path or not, I guess. Where does this happen, by the way? When I'm trying to get side edges in create surface in 370? Alright. Let me create a gap so that I remember where I am. And I'll save that and try to do this again. Create surface, get that error, so now it's a different line, obviously. 398. It's not Ctrl+F, it's Ctrl+G. 398, enter. Separate the boundary edges into two sides. What? Okay, so boundary edges. If it's closed, does it work? No. Alright, so I'm going to each edge in the boundary edges. That's alright. And then I'm asking... Um, I'm checking and creating these edge vert indexes. So vert index for V in edge verts. For each edge one there. Right, okay, so each edge, not the edge loop. And then if 0 is in there and 1 is not in there... I am creating an edge loop. No, I am getting an edge loop which is side edges. Uh... How am I gonna fix this? Hmm... What kind of question? How did I get there? How did I do that? Why did I do that? Why didn't I just select the first edge? I could just remove that value error. And here instead return, uh... None or something like that, and then check if it returned none. Break. But if I did that, there is... To avoid errors, other different type of errors, so I should... I need to think a little bit and figure out how I'm gonna do this. So if vert 0 is in there and vert 1 is not, then I'm selecting what? Let's see if I have more than one edge. Because right now... What is this, uh... I don't think that's gonna help me, but... Um... I only have four edges at this stage, so it's either 0, 1, 2, or 3. 0, 1, 2, 3, and then the error. Hmm. Before the error... What do I have in here, by the way? 0, 1, 2, 3, 1, 3, and then 2 and 0. If 0 in there and 1 not in there... 0 is in there, 1 is not in there... And I'm trying to do an edge loop. If I do that, it works. So this is because connection edges is less than 1. Is it? I probably got an error and I didn't even notice. Okay, so when does the error occur? If I have 3, I still get the error. I should always get the error. Yeah, I'm getting the error right now, okay? If I have at least one, uh, edge in the V direction, then I get no error. So edges V, if edges V is 0, I need a different approach. I think Copilot just did what I needed. I mean, it helped me out. Yes. Yes, that's right. Yes, that's right. And we got a plane. Alright. That's sorted. Back to business. Where were we? Okay. Uh, where were we? Where were we? I knew it, I knew it that after that I would come back here and forgot, and forget where I was. And what I was doing. Alright, okay, so this is the extrude, so... Let's extrude that, make it a bit bigger so I can see what I'm doing. And now because we only have four edges... This gives me that. Let me just do these only once. So 4, 7, 6, and 7? No sir. No sir. That is not alright. 4, 6, 7, and it should be 5. It's giving me 7 again. That might fix it. Exactly. I wasn't doing that check. So 4, 7, 5, 6. Let me try that again. 4, 7, 6, 7, no, that's not the case, okay? I need a bathroom break real quick. I'll be right back, and might as well do a coffee. Okay. So this obviously didn't work, so let me just... I need to do another check inside of this. If not, loop 2. And... E is not in there. Or length loop 2 is smaller than 3, what? No. Uh, yeah, kind of, not really. I guess more like that, yes? And now I'm missing one value. Uh, yes, exactly that. What is going on? Let's check it out. Let me extrude that, 5, 6, 4, 7, 6, 7, 4, 7, again. Uh... 5, 6, 4, 5, 6, 7, 4, 7. It's 5, it's 4, 5, 6, 7, that's what I have. So the first time... We got 5 and 6, so 5 and 6, cool. Then 4 and 5. 4 and 5, cool. Then 6 and 7, 6 and 7. Cool, and then 4 and 7, 4 and 7. That's what we get in extrude, right, okay. 5, 6, 4, 5, 6, 4. What? Where's the rest? 5, 6, and 4, where's 7? Hmm. Think I could benefit from a quote. "Who don't value your work, no one will." Right. Uh, what is going on here? Why does it not give me the 7? Is it one of these conditions that is screwing me here? 6, 7, 5, 6, 4. Okay, I believe it's probably this condition. Separate loops is, yeah, I mean... I'm placing something... In the list that I shouldn't. In loop. For loop in separate loops and for E in that loop, okay, that's fine. Didn't I just ask if the E index is in there? Uh, if the edge is in separate loops? I think I can just do... Let me try and see what this does, but I think I can simplify this a lot. Alright, so 5, 6, 4, and 7. I can just say else here, right? I think so. Need to test it with more geometry, but um... And these might not even be needed either. 5, 6, 4, and 7. Let's try it more geometry. 11, 7, okay. So... 11 and 7 is one of them, 12 and 9 is another, then 13 and 8. Okay, let's try with more geometry. Gotta be done. Let me just clear this and try that again. So 12 and 22, what is that? 12 and 22, 13 and 16, yeah, it works. 17 and 20, 21 and 23. And I don't think I even need this with that first question there with the continue. Alright. I was just complicating things. I gotta get something to eat. I'll be right back. My energy is going down, it can't happen. Alright, so... So what was my approach now that I have these separate loops to figure out which one is which? Because I completely forgot. So to get that edge or edge loop depending on the geometry. But I already know that this is the start edge. And if I have multiple edges here, they're gonna be ordered, so if I pick the first or the last, it's always gonna end up in a corner. I need myself some chicken bites. At this moment in time, this edge is not gonna be subdivided, so I can... Already have the corners, actually. In this loop, I'm actually going through each one of the corners' edges, so... That might be the solution. And I was really hungry. I didn't realize how much. Okay. I might need to grab the... Face that is closest to it. Oh! I can't think of a straightforward way of doing this. I don't wanna use lookup tables to see which edge is closest. I could do that, but that's very expensive on the CPU. I wish the solidify operation gave me more information. It doesn't. Just to relax my brain a little bit from that. The other day I did the translate words here and this average normal function is quite expensive. I'm wondering if this option that I just seen here does the same thing and more effectively. Was faces like that before? Yes, it was. Did I get an error? Oh, use normal from adjacent, true. It doesn't do anything. It just stays there. Of course, I just extruded it. I gotta move them. That's why I had that. Alright, forget that. Hang on. Select history. Hang on. It just gave me a... Because BMesh has a select history, I actually never used it. I'm thinking I could select the top right, bottom left edges before I do the extrusion. Hmm, nah. It's not gonna help me, is it? Let me check the documentation, though. Add, clear, discard, remove, validate and active, right. That doesn't help me at all. I don't know what I was thinking. I can't figure out a way of doing this. I could give the user just A, B, C, D and you figure it out. No, but I can't because I need to select loops based on this. Huh. I need to select loops based on this. Right. Maybe that's what I need to do right away. Maybe that's what I need to do right away because I got this. I got the corners, I got that. If I select this one and I look for what corner edges I've got in store, saved already. The two, actually, the two corner edges that are connected to this loop, I can then figure out in that list. Yeah, that's what I'll do. That's what I'll do. Before I forget. So I look at the start original edge, edges. Get the two corners that are connected to the start edges. And from the separated loops, check what list has two edges connected to those corners. Okay. So how do we get the start edges? At this point, they're already been saved in mesh props. I'm using a different system. I still gotta remove that system. Uh, is it really? Yes, it is. Get saved edges. Original start edges. That's right. That's, uh... Indices. Okay. So then we gotta get the two corners that are connected to the start edges. I don't need the edges, I just need the indices. Which is what I have already. Take it easy, co-pilot. Take it easy. Take it easy. Shut up for a second, thank you. Get the two corners that are connected to the start edges. Okay, co-pilot was right. I actually need that. I can't do this if I don't do this first on the edges. Unless I've done it before here somewhere. Actually, that... I don't need it here. Okay, so now I gotta go through each edge and see which one is connected to the corner. I'll probably do this in a one-liner if possible, but let's start with the loop first. What, so we're just gonna look in there and go away? Is that what we're doing? No. So for edge in start edges, if edge... And I think I got a function for this. Uh, utilities. Call something like edge share vert or something. Edge is share verts. That's the one. Edge A and edge B. Uh, we're going to corner zero. No. What's the, what did I wrote? Get the two corners that are connected to the start edges. What is, what is Copilot doing? I think the bottom part might be right. Hang on a second. Take it easy. I gotta go through the corners or cornering corner, right? And corners at this point, there's still a list, right? They're not a list of indexes, right? No, they're actually edges. Okay. They're edges. So for cornering corners. If the corner, if this edge shares an edge, uh, share verts with that corner. This is one of the corners that I want. Okay. Okay, I'll reuse, um... Okay, um... Let's see if we have the right corners. We should have this one, 24 and 26. We got nothing. It is very strange, in the least. Okay, so it doesn't even get in for cornering corners? Do you even have start edges? Feels like we don't. Yeah, no, okay. Okay, saves, um... I think I know what I did. Yeah. I saved it as a spline. Because I added the spline thing here. But I didn't save the start edge. So in here, where am I? Am I inside a loop? Save first and last original edge indexes. But don't I do that already? Right, I saved the spline edges. Okay. Line edges, um... I'm saving all start edges. Problem is that I'm giving it a spline index. And when this guy gets a spline index, it adds, adds it like this is a spline. I actually have to do is remove the index from the spline index. Yeah, but why do I have spline edges? Do I even have something that retrieves that or saves that? I can't do, um... If I give it a spline index, then it takes care of that instead. Why not just pass in the spline index? If it has a spline index, it's a spline. If it doesn't, it's not a spline, right? Let's not worry about that. I know how to fix this anyway. Um... This here. We can get from here. If I want the edges, I can do it here. And that's, and what I have down here is not the edges no more. Where is it? Did I post it? Okay, here. Alright, so if I wanna save the spline edges, I do need the... So that's the list of BeMesh edges. So edge index inside of what we have there, right? And this takes the, uh-huh. This needs to be the spline iteration that we are at the moment. What am I doing wrong, by the way? Yes, Copilot, you were right. I just need this to be the index of the current spline. We are inside, okay, so it's called spline index. So that way we have the spline edges. And here, it's, it's, we don't need to give it, um... Spline index. And now we should have the right thing. I could actually do this inside that loop, but leave it for now. Probably forever, but... Okay, let's see if we get what we're looking for. Probably don't need that print anymore. I'll leave that one in there. Clear out the console. Still get nothing. Still get nothing. Strange. Maybe this is wrong. Ye, well, um... Yeah, this is the first time I use it. So it's, there's a a big chance, a high probability that this isn't working properly. Well, first let me see if we actually have this, uh, the start edges, if they were saved. Let's see. Uh, so they should be these two, by the way. So two and three should be the start edges. And they should be inside the data API. In that mesh. Yes, mesh 001, this one. Not objects. I thought that was strange. There's too many stuff in there. I thought that was strange, there's too many stuff in there. It would be handy if I named this. It's almost impossible to look at something in here, I mean... It's not, but... That's end edges, okay. Alright, so... This is for the spline, because it has a spline index. It would be minus one, but either way, index one, that's one of them, yeah, sure. And index zero. I save this first, so it should be lower down the... This is a bit of a problem. I think every spline has the index of zero. Yes. Why is that? Because I didn't set the default, that's why. Same thing for the index. Minus one should be that I didn't put anything in there. Okay. Now I gotta, when you change something in here, you gotta reopen it. Alright, so now I know what's a spline and what's not. Alright, so we have start edges. One is, one of them is index one. Come on, open up. That's one of the end edges. Okay, so this should be the other start edge. Zero and one is the start edge. Oh, actually, start edge is down there. Right? Zero and one. So the end edge should be the two and three. Two and three. And this is the right group, sir, yeah? End edges. Okay, so now we're sure that start edge is an end edge, that's fine. Now, why does this function, while we're trying to get it, does not work? Save geo, you know it's fine. Get save geo, not so fine. Save geo index for save geo in self-save geo, sure. If group value is in save geo groups. Group value is in save geo groups. And save geo type equals geo type. Yeah, this one? I don't think that's gonna work. Not sure if I can do that. Alright, I need refills. I'll be right back. Alright, I got my refill. So save geo is not working. Interesting. What? Hang on. For save geo in self-save geo... If group value in save geo groups and save geo type, okay, so this is a bit that I doubt that it's done like that. You know what? I can test. I can test inside of Blender, I think. No, it's easier here, actually. Can't ask if it's inside of groups. I gotta turn groups into lists somehow. And apparently I just get this when I turn that into a list. So I don't turn this into a list like this. I have to do this. Yeah. Never mind the... Exactly. Always, ah, here we go, see. Right. This, actually, it's a good thing that I caught that. It's because when it's saving geo, it's always saving, it's also saving it incorrectly. We gotta fix that too. So instead of having to do this everywhere, I'll just inside of groups, of each group, create a function that returns a list of each group. So let me just create some space here, so I can see where I was working. So this is the, this is the guy. This is the guy we're talking about. Exactly. Everywhere, I actually want that. I'll just do that. Let's just test it, yeah. Accidental shortcut. Yeah, it works. So this is gonna be fixed once I introduce this into the other place. And now the questions we had here, this return will work. All I have to do is change groups with group lists. And the same on the setter. Oh, the setter doesn't even check. Do the smaller setters do? No. Check if index is already saved. Okay, okay, it does check. Okay, so for save geo and save geo, we have save geo type equals geo type and save geo index equals index. You call that a check? That's not a check. I'm starting to trust co-pilots too much, I guess. It's not even a check, that's just putting shit in there. Right? Checker one. It would be more readable if it was like that, by the way. The checker one is actually very similar to this one down here. Now, I just wanna check if the index is already saved. The index is already saved. And I'm adding the group in there. But I only add the group if the group is not in there. Really? That's exactly the same code. I'd rather repeat the code and create a function inside a function. This is faster than having another function in there. Declaring a function is more expensive than just having a little bit more code. I love when I get good, good ty... I love when I get good ty- Uh... Good typos. Right. That should fix the repeats here. Uh, I'm no longer printing anything when I do this. Okay. I kinda want to, though. Uh, am I not printing that over there? Yes. Uh, yes. Stop being silly. Okay. Right. Thank you. Yay, we have info. Magnificent. Magnificent. After doing all that, I'm a bit lost now. Uh... Where were we? Hmm... Okay, so, we have the start edge indexes there, sure. It's zero and one. And then the other print, uh, we're looking for the corners. So edge index zero and we look at corner 24, 26, 31 and 30 just... And then we check edge one and the connected corners are 30 and 24. Let's verify that. They are not. No, they are. 24 and 30, yeah. Very good. What is next in the list? I would completely forget all of this if I didn't write it down. Right, so... And from the separate loops, check what list has two edges connected to those two corners. So, we might not even need to append the corners there, we could just... Oh, okay, um... Idiot, I wrote down what I want to. Why don't you understand me now? You usually understand me. What's wrong? Are you upset with me, co-pilot? You must be. Anyway. Let's do it in a... Or in a... No, 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 separate loops. So, for edge in separate loops. I'm a bit lost, I'm just gonna go with a... I am getting real tired, to be honest. 20, 17, 21, 23, 12, 22, 13, 16. So, 20, 17, that's one loop. Yeah, this is the four loops, okay. And it's indexes. Alright, it's a list of indexes. No, it's not. It's a list of edges. I'm just printing the index, okay. And now I gotta do something like this. It needs to be an edge loop that has two edges that are connected, at least two edges connected to these two corners. No. Yeah, I gotta do what I got here. I'm not really liking this approach. Uh... Uh, it's not corners. This looks like a lot of work. Why, why shared plus equals one? What I'm getting that for? Uh... Edge loop, okay. I don't need that, I've been... That in the right place, though. I think so, yes. This is grayed out, so I'm not capturing it? Is that what you're saying? Why is it grayed out? I have the prints around here somewhere. I'll clean it up eventually. What I want from separate for loop? In... So here, I'm just getting that one that was selected up there. Okay. Right, this is a VM, uh, a VM edge. A VM edge. Just one? Loop 17 and loop 20. Oh yeah, okay, sure. 17 and 20? What are you talking about? I can't even see where 17 and 20 is. Alright, 17 is over there and 20 is over there. That is completely very very wrong. That's not what I want, so I've done something wrong. Okay. Alright. That's an edge, by the way. I know I got the right corners, right? Let me just make sure I still got the right corners. So corners 25 and 31. 25, 31. And then it gives me these guys up here, 23 and 21. Because I've done the right, the wrong, I asked the wrong questions. Alright, so... Let me roll back a little bit. From separate loops, because we already have the correct connected corners. For edge loop, for edge in edge loop. I think I know what it is, um... Yeah, that's it. Um... Mr. 13 and Mr. 16. And all that work was just for the start edges. Let's see if we can... Make this reusable. Clean up a little bit. I believe that all this code can be reusable. Despite changing the group here, I'll get the other ones. 23 and 21. 20 and 17. Yep. And 12 and 22. Yeah. Okay, that's, that's alright. We'll turn this into a function. What is not inside that function that I need? It loops, right? And corners. Corners. Are you really fake at C corners? Come on, man. You can do better than that. Get adjacent index. That's the one. Oh, we need a lot more than that. What? What is this? Index in loops? Idiot. The group is not a string. Ah, my assistant is he's not in his best day. No, he's not. Well, I did let him do that. Okay, so it needs to return this variable. And what does it need? I'll just pass that in. Because it's only used in there, I'm not gonna be worried about typing in here. Not make our lives miserable. What else do you need? Separate loops, that's right. I need you to return or is it the edge loop index, please? Actually, I have a break here. I think I can just return down here, right? No, because it's enough to just return that here. The group. Stop it. It's not a string, but I know what it is. Come on. Why didn't I copy that? It would be easier, right? Alright. Oh, it was already had it here, okay. Alright, so what do you need? Need the mesh props? The corners, good. Wait, please. Please. Right? Okay, that's the starting like so. Let's make sure that's working. 13 and 16. And if we have three, we already know the fourth. Trying to be smart, ain't I? At least there's less calculations, calculations happening, right? If I just look at which one is not in the list. My brain can't even do this. Separated. Go pilot, please help me. Yeah, that works. It's not start index. It's, it's side B. Now it doesn't equal minus one, come on. No, it doesn't equal that either. It's gonna equal zero if I say none. Just, I just wanna declare it, seriously. He's gonna get it. Hey, give me side B then. Give me side B. 12 and 22, okay. Those two, okay. You sure that's not the same as side A? 20 and 17. Good, good boy. Very good. Very good. Alright, so now we can place that in there. Ooh, Jesus Mary and Christ. They said Jesus Mary and Christ. Alright. Let's just save that geometry and be done with it. Let me save it. Alright. These mesh props, come on. What? So we save an edge at a time. Yeah, okay. It's for edge. Save edge takes what? Index and group. So this is what we're gonna save. We just index and group, yeah? Yeah, okay. It's correct. It was, that's a lot of code. For one simple, what seems to be one single thing. Why don't I do this inside the each function? Because this one is different. Nope, nope. Nope. I will do that. I don't care. This looks like a mess and I don't like it. It's actually save adjacent index. Yeah, I don't want need that, but sure. One finger at a time, I mean. I think, I think it makes more sense and it's a lot, a lot less code written, a little bit more calculations, but I can live with that. Tiny bit, actually. More or less. More or less. No overloads. What do you mean no overloads? First of all, that doesn't return anything. It just saves it. Yeah, returns none. That's why we got this issue here. If I actually wanted to see this, bring this, it would be up there inside the function. Holy crap a moly. That's done. And that's the and for next session. She's the safe system that looked, that was really not as good as the new one. Let me save a version before something goes wrong. Magnificent. I think we are finished for this session. Taking a long time creating the backup. Think I'm gonna have something to eat. And I'll try to come back later. Thank you for being here. Let's leave with a quote. Perfect. That's the right quote. I'm not sure if I'm done for today, but in terms of code I am. So I'll see you later or that's it. Thank you for being here.